All right, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Hardman and, uh, second by, uh, Mr. Parker. Our roll call, Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Brody.
Aye.
Ms. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Hardman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. McCray.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Parker.
Aye.
And Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Uh, the ayes have us, the, uh, been in charge of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, the minutes have been adopted. And, uh, we will now go for citizens' comments. Time is going to be first before comments.
So, Commissioner Johnson, I have this assignment.
Okay, well, I'm on a, on my, and I just want to thank everybody, because they've been very busy and they keep me informed what's been going on. And I want to thank them for their dedication and hard work. And I understand we have a special guest in the house today. Uh, Councilwoman Trammell, are you there? Councilwoman Trammell there?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I want to welcome her to the meeting. I also want to take the opportunity to thank her for her continued, continued support of R R H A. And if you have some words of encouragement, we would love to hear it.
May you. Can you hear me Bill?
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, unless you, unless you can go on council with me, that's for sure. I can even add a fire.
But you, you, you've been working hard, you've been fighting hard. Let's just keep the fight up with the spirit. You want to give us a few words?
If you want me to breathe a little higher.
Yeah.
I'm making myself at home, is that okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you Bill. Um, your statement, "To citizens of the Eighth District and I greatly appreciate you attending our May, May eighth, Eighth District, May eighth, Eighth District meeting, community meeting at the South, Southwest Art Lounge, your positive message and presence gave everyone hope that better days are here. I want to personally thank you for all that you do for our citizens in need of safe or better housing. We had a very successful and informative meeting with over one hundred and fifty citizens in attendance. You provided our residents with a lot of information that your current and future programs and opportunities are available through Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority. Your presentation touched on the ways that you are working with the Richmond Police Department and your security program to provide a safer environment in the public housing communities. I look forward to working with you and your team at Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority in the future. May God blessings continue to shine upon you. If I cannot help you, assistance, do not hesitate to contact me at two three three oh eight oh four, two three three seven three eight two. That's my home number, my personal cell, eight oh four two four zero five zero five zero. Stephen, thank you and your board members for all that you do, because I know many times you're not thanked enough. And I, from the bottom of my heart, thank all of you for what you do. I'm so grateful for you. God bless all of you. Sincerely, William Brown." Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you so very much. And I want to let you, let you know from the bottom of my heart, you know that if you need, I'm a phone call away. And whatever I can do to help you in your efforts, call me. And you know I'm going to get back with you. Okay. Stephen, I'm going to turn it, but Mr. Carter, I'm going to turn it over to you now, so you can get, get, get this party started.
Mr. Chairman, I want to start now with, uh, C O updates. The first item, uh, is the presentation we did two weeks ago, uh, with, at City Council with the police chief members. But before I go there, I'll take personal privilege, uh, and let everyone know that my team and I had a very productive, positive conversation with Commissioner Hardman recently. And I want to, I think, before I acknowledge that. I think he and I talked about, uh, some ways forward as we look to soon talk about how, how we, we don't kill it. So stay tuned to that, but I told him, we had a good time. Next, uh, in the, we, uh, that's my city council two weeks ago, uh, when we can do things differently. We know as the summer must come up, uh, things, weather gets hot, there's going to be more, that's just the way it is. So I know, I think I sent messages to you as board members about homicides and other, uh, I've been talking to members of city council. In fact, it was Councilwoman Reba who called me once. I went along with, uh, President, uh, Newville and said, "What, what can we do that's, uh, different?" So, uh, then, uh, President Newville, uh, police chief, I was annoyed to give an update on what we're going to do differently. What you have in your pact is, um, is a presentation about the enhanced security enforcement efforts that we're going to undertake, uh, with R P D and with Century Force. Um, I'm going to let Senior Vice President, uh, confront and talk, uh, just highlight a couple of the most important things, but, you know, I'm always a big believer, you just can't put more police somewhere. You got to create safe spaces for young people to go. Uh, as Delegate McQuinn likes to say, that idle mind and idle time is a double workshop. So you just can't say, "We're going to do more enforcement." And so part of what we're going to do is, even though the Capitol Center is not ready, we're going to be working around Stuckey and Mark the Red, figuring out, um, where these, where a safe place, we can have young people go. And what sort of, and what additional programs we're going to offer them. So, there's, but there's some very specific things we have to do because, you know, there was a raid recently, and there've been a couple of them this year with ATF that was coordinated with, uh, R P D. And they knocked down one of our units, and there were just loads of guns, drugs, and of course, we had to, you know, convince that person to release enforcement. But we want to, we had, we had to do something different. There was a video showing a bunch of young girls fighting each other, and then luckily, because R P D came belatedly, no one pulled out a weapon, but no one got hurt. So Corey, can you just walk through some highlights of what, uh, the presentation we gave and what some things we're going to do? And then, then, see if the commissioners have any questions.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon commissioners, uh, so some highlights regarding, to our safety department. So one thing that our CEO and COO has charged us with to be more, uh, data-driven, which is the creation of, uh, monthly reports that shows us statistics. So using those reports, uh, regarding crime, um, so, so far, uh, there's been eleven homicides, law, who are, they exist, which is down to, uh, last year. Uh, we have seized over eighty-three, uh, uh, weapons, uh, and that was a police raids from the Big Six. Um, so we're using information to be data-driven. We're going to be using our, uh, vendors, Century Force to deploy our, uh, contractors in those epic centers to kind of deter crime from happening. Uh, one thing that Mr., uh, Ezra has indicated, he doesn't want to over-police the Big Six. So he has implemented Resident Services programs to ensure that we are educated and we're providing our residents with the tools to be able to, uh, effectively de-escalate ten situations where they don't have to, uh, result in violence. Uh, as you may be aware, we have this line rest that allow us to hire de-escalation specialists. Um, in addition to that, we're going to be rolling out a site-based, uh, security plan per site. So we have onboarded a, uh, writer who's going to be using the metrics within our reports to come up with a intentional plan to address the need of every site. Uh, in addition to that, uh, as you know, uh, we're doing a lot of community efforts. Uh, one thing, a big topic is loose dogs, which we discussed in the last board meeting. Uh, so we are working with the city to address loose dogs. We're getting, uh, dogs neutered to kind of control the population that's in our sites. Uh, in addition to that, we have posted information to all of our residents, kind of what to do if you encounter a stray animal, as well as who to report it to. Uh, another thing, um, that's, uh, very important to Mr. Nesner, is the overall look of our, uh, community, which regards to illegal dumping. So we're going to be deploying measures to reduce the number of trash and illegal dumping that happens at our sites. And we're going to be working with our internal, uh, legal department to see kind of what measures that we can use to go after, to, uh, dump illegal, um, items at our sites, and we're going to post signs. Then I think Red Sis, we're going to have some events like National Help, which is one of the stuff, uh, what the goal of that is that we want to, uh, re-engage our R P E police department as well as our residents. Our police department, uh, in safety and kind of assure that, hey, uh, uh, the police is here to assist us, so please do not hesitate. Also, our relaunch of our tideline, so that they see what the state said, so that they actually move it over to the police department. Thank you.
Next, I wanted to say, first name was Newville who came about it, that's the chief that I mentioned, promoting, and then a call from the fire of the city, and that is that, Councilwoman Reba, she said, "Mr. Nes, if you really need to, R J, about what you were doing, I'm inviting you and the police chief to come to my public safety committee and make this presentation." So I want to thank you, uh, Councilwoman Reba for, uh, giving us that platform, allowing us to come make that presentation to City Council from your committee, uh, both police chief and I. So thank you. I know you care, even though you don't have public housing in your geographic, uh, councilman district, you, you care. And that's why you said, "Hey, you and the police chief need to come." So I would just want to thank you. Any questions, uh, representative?
I wanted to ask you, why is in the, what you said, the dumping situation, is that cameras over there by the dumpster, or is it going to be camera, cameras all over to see when they're doing the dump?
So we're going to be placing cameras into the areas, or we're going to try to boom our cameras in areas that kind of capture the areas that we're having problems with illegal dumping, as well as kind of post signs to let them know that that's something that can happen, that they should see still as well.
My question, um, for is, um, some of the, what, um, individual safety personnel. The cameras that we just bought, we just bought a brand, a brand new camera. Do they do facial recognition or how do they work?
They have L P Rs, uh, license plate readers. So what we are able to do is get the, uh, license plates of the individual who is illegally dumping and try to see if we can look up there. Uh, that, I, I can take another look at, uh, the car, but I, I'm not aware of that spatial.
Yeah, because whether the car is not registered to that person, but you're charging or trying to charge somebody, that's probably not even a problem.
That's a, a great point. Uh, and we'll take, I'll work with, uh, legal department to see what measures that we can take ours to if someone says, "I borrowed my cousin's car," or "I wasn't being somebody using my car." So we're trying to explore all options, but the intended outcome of this is that, uh, the message to get out there that R R J has taken illegal dumping seriously, because we want to ensure that, or our health and safety of all of them. So hopefully, when they see that retention, they're going to say that now, or.
My last question to you, Corey, is, see, do you recognize?
Yes, sir. Uh, and that's from, uh, January, uh, through May.
Are we participating in a buyback program on every unit?
Not at this time, but that's something that we'll do, sir, and I provide this, uh, group. Yes, sir.
I just want to, I have one question, you know, for clarification. We don't R J, we don't, I'm saying.
Yes, sir. Uh, those are, weapons are, that are confiscated by R P D. So in our month reports, we have a analyst that, um, kind of works as a liaison between R R J and R P D, that's able to provide us the, um, uh, statistics, uh, per month. So that's how we're able to get that information for our weapons.
Commissioner Parker raised, um, my attention about, uh, facial recognition. You know, that seems a chilling, you know, impression. And it was probably a matter of software, uh, with the camera that has that, uh, hardware, um, capability, but the post sign that says, "You're not only being recorded, but we have facial recognition," I think that reverberates. Can we, um, can we get some, some research, you know, provided to tell us what those capabilities would be like, the cost, all that good jazz? Because I think that goes a long way to know that I'm running these streets, I may have open warrants, I don't really live over there, do I have facial recognition? I need to get it out.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. First one, um, the crime statistics are like dashboard, first off.
We do provide a monthly report with all the, uh, the data points there, so, uh, we submit it to Mr. Nesner, so, um, I can print the most recent, um, report, it can be submitted.
Uh, the other question is, have we done, made kind of infrastructure assessments, if there's anything, environments, health, sure crime, fences, people, yeah.
Yes, sir. So that's part of the plan that we're going to be doing, has a skill plan, uh, the long-term plan. So, um, as I mentioned, that we're going to review, uh, site-based, uh, review of each of our hands and kind of create a plan in regards to safety, so that is a component. And just as a note, uh, R R J is a medical application where, uh, a potential two hundred and fifty thousand dollars can be added to our capital funds, if you skill manage that site. And one of the components was that was to increase lighting as a way to deter, uh, crime as well.
Corey, I've got one more question, but I'm looking, if you remember that. You, you talk about, um, we've, um, that's a mission something about the, yeah, the Capitol Center being, for example, now, temporary, prepared and everything else, but we have a bunch of kids on the street, something. Are we, um, is PAL still available, um, to the police department? Are they still doing PAL? And are we able to partner with them to get some of our kids involved in PAL, uh, to, 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 to be able to help with that, to provide?
Um, uh, our A V P of Public Safety has said yes, that we do have that program, we're able to partner with them as well. And we're going to show that as we, you know, do our, uh, strategic planning, from the spring to summer, that that's included in there.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can Massey? I guess it's okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I believe Step, um, but in, in Gilvin area has a, um, they usually have a G I boot camp. And they also have the, um, reading, um, program, usually starts the twenty, twenty-seventh of June, and goes to like, I think, the second week in July, and then the boot camp comes. Um, the boot camp, G I's boot camp comes, so that's one option in Gilvin that I do know. And, um, they are, uh, I think in other communities, they have some, some, um, boys and girls club, if I'm correct. But, um, I think, um, but to re-elliate what our commissioners are saying, I think that if we could anymore for our kids, I do agree.
This, um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Reba, uh, she, I think she'd like to give a comment on the subject of PAL, or we'll talk here.
Thank you. I think that, first of all, I would ask the other council members to come here and, you know, be a part of this, because as Stephen said, I do not have public housing in my district, but it does mean a lot to families because of these families and their children. And I, I really appreciate what I'm hearing today, because if the children don't have anything, then what are they going to do? They're going to be on the street. They're going to be doing things they shouldn't be doing, and, you know, can't blame them if they don't have a place to go and if they don't have any guidance. So the other council members that do have public housing, instead of them fighting with Stephen and fighting with the board, they should be here with some solution. That's, I mean, that's where it's going to start. And like I said, you've got to come to the table, talk about it, and not only talk about it, do something about it. Stop blaming this board and stop blaming, uh, what he's trying to do to make it better for everybody. Seriously, I, I mean, it hurts my heart when I hear them, you know, putting down, or put you all down, and then I think to myself, have you been, have you reached out to them? Have you sat at the table? And I heard just earlier that I'm the first one. So that is not good. But I appreciate you all letting me talk, and I appreciate you all inviting me. And now I've got to go to a civic association meeting at the police station with, um, Adam's partner. Thank you all, and I will definitely come back if you all invite me. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Trill Trammell, and you're welcome to come at any time. Stephen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I don't hear that we've got Rec Parks involved in what we do. Uh, I don't hear much about, uh, it moves, because one thing we, we don't have is access and support from, uh, Rec and Parks. And I think they should be at the table for making resources as far as space available to us to do things for our kids and work more that way. Also, I would like to see that our you, a youth council that's working with public safety, with the, that the city is offering. And that's a whole lot, but I think we have, we have resources. I think we need to take better advantage of them.
Yes, sir. Two good things. So Ralph does work with, uh, uh, Rec Park, in fact, he has a, uh, a week ago, uh, that enlightened the fact that the Capitol Center is closed, and that's where we had a lot of our summer activities. He is now working with Rec Park to identify the other recreational spaces, uh, where we're going to have our summer programs, and I'll have Ralph, uh, at the next meeting come and report. But I asked, I tasked him with, uh, having those conversations. They don't, uh, give a, give a report on that. Um, with respect to, uh, sort of a youth council, one of the things that we did do in a conversation with, uh, Marilyn Olds, and we wanted to create, um, a youth of R T O. Um, and so we're in a conversation. The funny thing is that when I, I made the suggestion, the R T O said, "What are you trying to do replaces?" I said, "No." I said, you know, um, you know, well, season, and I said, "No." I said, you know, "Why don't you just, each of you go into the community, and you can pick your own successor." And so, um, Marilyn Olds likes that. And so we're trying to get, um, the R T O to, hey, I'm going to pick a you, a young person, we're going to pick two from each of the Big Six. Uh, we're trying to work with Leandra, we're trying to find a training account. We, we, we are making phone calls, uh, uh, are they Reynolds, reading college, and some other, because we want to get the young people that we choose to get them training and leadership, you know, just a weak leadership thing. Um, so Ralph and I are working with Marilyn Olds to do that, because we got to get the young people involved. Um, and so we're, we're, we're working on that. We can report back to that, but we got to get some funding for it. But we're going to first start with just recruiting young people at each R T O person, and find your own person who you want to bring up and do that. So we can report back on that.
Mr. Chairman, can you make a comment?
Yes, please.
Yes, um, a couple of, well, I think it was in, around January, February, Virginia Union University submitted a proposal to Parks and Rec uh, to provide, uh, summer camps, uh, for, uh, the kids in, in the, you know, public housing to do, you know, basketball camps, football camps, cheerleader camps. So I, I don't know what really happened to the proposal and where it went, but I can certainly, I'll try to find it.
Well, we appreciate that, and then once we get this information, we've got to find a, a positive way to get the word out. Because a lot of times, these things come, which are great ideas, but we don't get to the implementation phase, and a lot of times, it just sits on the shelf. So I, I hate, uh, that we put everything on Ralph's plate. Uh, I think we have to expand that in such a way that he's not overburdened with everything coming right to him. I know it comes under Resident Services. And also, when we go to the R, R T O, I'd like to see the, the young people get involved, rather than putting it at the R T O's feet. And let them come to the table and make the recommendations with what they would like to see. And at, at the summertime, all the schools are shut down. And that's another place where we can be, including our Richmond Public Schools, where we serve the same constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, I think.
Yes.
So do we, do we have any partnerships in place that provide food services for, for, you know, the school?
We do, Fee More is just one of them, but we have a number of that Ralph worked, uh, with, yes, Andrew, yes.
But they didn't deal with that?
I believe so. I believe so. Fee More is just one of them. Uh, I remember one day I was at, yeah, one of the council, Council was serving more, but one day I was on a Saturday, and Ralph had like just several vendors that were providing free food, and then, uh, at the end, Ralph said, "Okay, let's just take some home," because there was some left over, and I got, I got some fruit, whatever, but I'll have Ralph to give a report on that. And to your, your, your point, Mr. Chairman, about the use, that, that, again, it starts with, we've got to recruit, uh, the other non-public, so we'll again, back on our recruitment efforts on that.
I had a question on that. You said recruit.
Yes.
So is that going to be some type of sending out flyers so that they know, so they can participate? Or what is it going to be so that they can know if that they want to participate in?
Right. So when I first presented to you R T O, several months ago, um, they said, "Well, that's what you're trying to recruit young people for places." I said, "No, no, no. Well, you go out, well, you go out and recruit one person." And then Ralph and I want to recruit a second person. But I think it's important that the R T O don't think that we're trying to recruit young people to places, that's what they said. So I said, "Pick someone who's going to be your successor, that you want to recruit." And so that the R T O members get involved. And then in addition to that, because we want to pick two young persons from each of the Big Six, maybe one person that, uh, and we want to do that.
Okay, and I'm reading my was accident, because a lot of kids are not going to know. And then if they, you got one that wants to participate, because you got people, you got kids that shy, that might not say nothing, that might not open up to that.
I have four, I know. I'm sorry. But that, that was all.
Thank you. I just wanted to address, um, Commissioner McCray, when it comes to reaching out or outreach to the youth, um, one of the things that we like to do is to kind of meet them where they are. We know that a lot of them are on social media, um, you know, on Instagram, they're on TikTok. And so a lot of times, what we will do, depending on if we're, who we're targeting, the age group and so forth, we will, um, do what's called geo-fencing. So, uh, basically, it's drawing a line around all of our communities that are in that zip code. And then we will basically, um, advertise to all of the cell phones or, um, you know, uh, tablets, things. things like that about whatever program it is that we're doing. We'll push it out on YouTube, we'll push it out, you know, like I said, Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, because we find that that's where a lot of young people are. That's where they get their information, that's where they share information, that's where they get their news. So that is how we would actually reach out to them and let them know about the program.
Okay. Well, that being said, what about ones that don't understand? You understand what I'm saying? Like you just, that was a lot of social media. And she might, she might have had Instagram or TikTok or something like that, but she don't know about the same.
So in those cases, of course, you know, we would rely on our property management offices. We would have flyers that are posted throughout the community. We may even do something like yard signs where we put them throughout the community so that they can still see if they're walking or if they have to go to the property management office or they can see one of our message boards, they would still get the information.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I think we should also include public service announcement space on our radio and TVs in the city because they can just do that. Ms. Community Clovia, she's absolutely excellent as far as getting involved and doing things like that and see if we can get, take advantage of the public service space. Because I think it's a requirement that through their contract with the city, that they make public service space available to us. And that's an opportunity for us to also reach out. If they do radio, I can't understand what they're listening to, but I know there's an opportunity there. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Brody. As Vice President of RTO, I really feel like, Mr. Nesbit, you just really overstepped some boundaries because we know what the conversation was. And I really will, we'll address it Thursday.
Okay. Look forward to the conversation with Commissioner Brody. The next item on the agenda is the RTO. I was in the RDC. We had a really good beginning of the RDC Board meeting. And what we want to do, your senior packet, we wanted for transparency purposes, provide you all, Board of Commissioners, with an agenda of what we, what we discussed. We will do that regularly. We will provide the Board of Commissioners with the agenda that the, that the RDC discusses a little. And again, that's for accountability and oversight. I'm going to have Commissioner Lewis talk a little bit about items that we talked about. Obviously, we codified the vote that the Commissioners voted in that was to vote. Commissioner Lewis on the board. Some other important things that we did, we talked about the proposed loan. We're going to be moving ACVP off of, from this building on the fifth floor, back to nine eighteen, that we're going to rehab in that building. We think that's a good thing because we want to have those services or clients every day. We've got a sort of like come home, come back home campaign. But particularly our residents, they don't like, you know, it's difficult. The Commissioners know the park here. And so we can go back to that space. And what we're, what we're doing is we've looked at what it's going to take to move all of them back. And then what we call, we'll leave them sort of aspirational rehab for a later date, but we want to, we've got some specialist work and some other things to do there. The entire group, they're very, very, very excited. We get the street parking back, if you all remember. We think that we're going to expand some of that space so that there can be more intimate conversations when our clients come in and residents. And they're very, very, very excited. Also, from a budget perspective, I know I'm CEO of, appreciate this. We're going to, we're going to reel that move in here. They're going to be looking to move another tenant in there so that that'll be that much less from a budget perspective that we'll, that we'll be paying. So we've got a realtor working on that. So that was one of the big things that we also talked about. And then we also talked about what, what sort of initiatives that we can start, begin thinking about to progress with to bring unrestricted funding in. Because, you know, we got these limited, we got to move out of the space where we get eighty percent of our funding from HUD and a lot fewer and fewer dollars are coming from Washington DC to support our residents and what we do. And so we, we're going to talk a lot more about what initiatives that we can do that can generate funding. As we're going to go out now and to certain foundations, nonprofit organizations, RDC is the entity that title one C three and now R H A. So we're seeing those dollars. And so I just think it's important as we look to do more, we're not getting more money from HUD and that's been for many, many years. So that was a good thing. Last, and then I have to say, Commissioner Lewis wants to say anything. One of the things that I think that we've been doing well when it comes to the RDC is that we've been listening. We've been, I admit, I went for City Council. That we should have done a better job, I think, explaining what is the RDC, that it's a nonprofit, that this board and its wisdom said we need to, for accountability, they have a Board of Commissioners on that board, the RDC board, and that we should have done a better job of saying that when we do do a phased development of Gilpin, that'll be done through, at least that means the title, the ownership of, and it's a phased development, what remains of the public assets with R H A, sort of things, I think. And one of the things that has been clear, and I want to bring to this, the Board of Commissioners, I believe, is we need to have, we need to have the RDC board better reflect resident voices, just like this board. We have two resident Board of Commissioners and we have a voucher holder. And being out there recently, I've been out there, y'all, been listening, taking the income and been listening. But I think it's a good thing. And we're going to, I want to raise it here with the US Board of Commissioners, that I believe it's important to have a resident voice heard. And Mr. Chairman, I'll just talk with you about it. But obviously, it's this board that vote on it, but we, the RDC, believe that we should have, and you remember, a Board of Commissioner that is a resident, that is representing the resident voices on the RDC board. Everywhere I've gone, I've heard this, I've heard this, high and low, of activists, everyone. And I think this, we're not actually just that. You know, this board should reflect that for residents. So Commissioner Lewis, I don't know if you had anything to say. I think we had a very robust meeting. If you want to say anything, Commissioner Lewis.
Yes, I'll just make a couple of short comments. I think, one, I think it's very important for the RDC to be transparent in its transactions and its dealings and what it's, what it's doing. And second, I'm hoping that here shortly, there will be a plan laid out of how unrestricted dollars will be earned or raised. And I think that's the direction that the RDC is going in. Okay, thank you.
Any comments from any of the resident board members? Who's providing leasing services for, leasing services? As you may have mentioned, we have contracted with Agnes E. D., they both are to have leasing services and find a tenant so that we can, on second cost, who's handling it? Sure. The African American realtor who helped us get in here because he's working with this, the owner of this building. One of our first things is that we had to get permission from the owner of this building. And we thought it was important that he had a relationship with them. Because at first they were, ah, we don't, we don't know if we want to do that. And so we had to do some negotiations, not vague, but we had to really have a serious conversation. And then at the very end, they were led to the owner of this building and said, sure, we will allow you, we're going to be signing that document to say, go out and try to find a tenant to come into occupied space. I just wanted to continue that conversation. You and I, and refreshing the basis, my knowledge. Thank you. Yes, sir. Any other questions about that item?
I have a question. You know, we mentioned the RDC, we played, had a partnership meeting that we talked about happening for a while. How often do we plan to meet?
Right. That is something that we did discuss. Obviously, we're not obligated to meet like the Board of Commissioners every month. I believe, I think we did settle on something, and again, I'm trying to go from memory rather than what we said. I believe we said, and someone can correct me, I think we said, once a quarter. But that if need be, we can just call the meeting if something was very important. And I believe we decide on once a quarter. And if something comes up that we need to meet, we just call, call the meeting.
My follow up with that is Commissioner Lewis mentioned just now about setting a plan together for moving forward, how we're going to acquire these and what the end game is going to be. So do you have a timeline for that? Because a timeline, putting together a plan for moving forward.
Or what initiatives?
What initiatives we're going for? Where's the end game and where are we going? Who are we going for?
Right. So we do have, we do have a list right now. We're working furiously, we can, on fifty at the top, fill-in property and foundations, not just in the Commonwealth, but around that we want to go out, we want to do a road show. We have a spreadsheet, we can show that with you next month. We've been working on that furiously. And it actually shows what specific areas that foundation, you know, some do climate change, some do this, some do that. And actually is, you know, when I was a lawyer, I used to represent some nonprofits. They would go after funders and they would actually support operations and even salaries. So we've got a spreadsheet and we can share that with you. We've been trying to finalize that, but it takes a lot of work. And we can, we can share it with you next month. We've got Sig, who's a, I introduced to me, and Chrissy Smith, who's one of them, said they're both working on that. And I think we're about to finalize that. We can share it with you that, that next month. And we're going to be looking at also, you know, not just foundations until the progress of these, but high net worth individuals. We're also got a list of investors as well. Because what we recognize is that if we want to do before with real transformation, real estate development, there's just not enough money when you look at the financial capital set, right? If you, if you do Fed, you know, state and city, you, even when you look at what the development puts in, it's just not enough. We did a quick forensic look at, you look at where Creighton Court is now, and you look at the other phases, you look at what is contemplated with Moser, you look at what is contemplated with Gilpin, the ten phases, ten phases. And we did some financial projections. There are financial gaps. And so we've got a list of investors. Some of them are what you call social impact investors. And we got, there's a couple of foundations that are playing in the real estate space as well. So we've got a list, and again, we'll share that list with you on this one.
And my biggest thing with that too, Steve, is that a lot of these people have timelines for when they go through money. And they, they give it out of a certain grid. So if you don't register and get, get your name and the hat and all that, you know, you miss out until another year. Yeah, with this thing being unrestricted money that we're trying to generate, we need to get on top of as soon as we can in order to get our name at the top of this, that club on the scene.
Yes. And you'll see the spreadsheet that we've got. There are a bunch of columns, and one of the columns is when, deadlines, when you need to make a presentation to submit your proposal. Others, like for instance, we will be making a presentation to Bank of America Corporate. Yesterday, the branch, President of Bank of here, he's standing up for corporate in Charlotte. That's not a specific date on that, but we will be doing that. I met when I was at the inner city, I met Senior Vice President, Javi, and afterward, we was heading up a foundation for Alcatraz. And so, but we're looking outside. We're not just looking at the Commonwealth contingent. We've got all of them. Again, you'll see the spreadsheet. I mean, it's very detailed and it's got some timeline, deadline where we need to hit some. We'll share that next, next. Any, any other questions on that item? Hearing now, next item, and that is require board training. I think the, Miss Denise, Mr. Mike Kelly, who had an article, wants to give to us, make some comments about that, both of them.
Commissioners, as a reminder, the Department of Housing Development, everyone that's clients monitoring the view of the agency, which tells the forty four five hundred twenty two observations that we ran through the governance committee. One of the observations was in the governance. And specifically, they talked about board trading as, as required. And again, they talked about having, how critical it is for the location of basic functions, regulations, program operation, financial management, and, and before I did this training, he provides a HUD on completion. This is something we talked about before. I want to turn it over to Mr. Webb, who has pulled together a recommendation using HUD exchange program. I actually had long, right, I know, Mr. Hardland, they give this one as well. It's an excellent program, helps you, for the board to use as a tool to get this training.
Thank you, everyone. I just emailed earlier today that gave you all a nice list of all the seven modules for Board of Commissioner training that includes procurement, it talks about our housing programs, monitoring, risk management, and even the housing disaster program and the like. And so, while I know the videos on there are longer than I thought at the last, at the last meeting, I do apologize. It is, it is good information. Also, when you click on the links that were given in the spreadsheet, it will have materials and PowerPoints as well for you to review. And I did give a timeline. We just want to get that done as soon as possible. And again, we are here to assist if you need assistance. As I gave my contact information as well, Patrick, and my availability, we're here for you all. Is, I, my recommendation is focus on what you want to know and then do the least interested one at the end.
So my, my question on that, you said the term part, so each one of them is longer than what you said. With that being said, all these institutions, you know, all of those, you get a specific test at the end, right? What is required once you, once you all look for training? So why are you doing the training? Are there tests in? What is involved? So my understanding there isn't a test at the end? It's you come on the video? No, no. So you just watch the video? So I have a question on that. If it pauses on the video, I have four children, like you're saying, but if it pauses on this?
You can pause it.
And you can come back?
Yes.
You can self pace.
Okay. So yes, so all the webinars are self paced. You pause where you need to, you go back where you need to. So, you know, you probably can even listen to it in the background. But it is, it is very much self paced. That's why also the materials are there. They're training material, the PowerPoint and additional information right next to the video if you just go through the video.
Okay.
So that is all available, yes. As far as getting your certificate, make sure you have an account. And then you generate the certificate. And once you do that, you send it off to me, as Mr. Kelly has indicated, we do want to make sure we can forward that to others.
You guys can do it. Yeah. I have a question. The fundamental of Commissioner one-on-one, is that the same or is that something different in the ethics?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
But it covers, one of the, is that one of the modules or?
No.
It was a separate one? It's a separate module, but it covers just about every, because I'm taking the HUD one and I'm taking the fundamental. And I'm taking the fundamental again and after. Is that, can that substitute for that or you just want us to just to take that as well?
Right now, just take, just take the HUD exchange.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Nesbit, you skipped over.
I'm about to go with every time. So hearing your other question on the last item under the CEO update. So, hearing your other question on the last item under the CEO updates, is our special board meeting in July for our annual plan. Now, with our chief of staff, Miss Kim, will talk about it, and if you would please, Ms. Kim. Let's also talk a little bit about the public meeting we had yesterday.
Sure. Just wanted to update the board with where we are. We are, we planned on coming to you today with the resolution for the, the annual plan documents. We put a bit more time in the revisions compared to what we did when we spoke with you back in, back in April. I think you received a copy of the summary of changes, and you can tell that they're a bit more extensive. So, what we are planning on doing is having a special board meeting on July first or second to present the, the plans to both, to all of you, excuse me, for your approval for submission to HUD. And just to fill you in on what we've been doing since then, since we came to you guys in April, the plans did go out for public comment. The public comment period actually ends today, or ended today at five o'clock. We received comments via email. We had our public hearing yesterday, which is required, because yesterday evening at five thirty. We had about ten people attend. We had several people attend online, probably for about a total of twenty altogether. Very thoughtful comments were made. We're going to be taking all those comments into consideration between now and when we meet with you guys beginning of July, and make any updates to the plan based on those comments that we see necessary. And last night was, we got, we got some very thoughtful, thoughtful comments on, on the plan. Folks raised some concerns, and we will look at those as we look to update the plan for final submission to you. Do you want me to provide any more detail?
I didn't.
Would you like me to provide any more detail?
No, I think I can say, I'm going to open up and see if any members have any question.
I, I got a chance to attend the meeting online. I thought it was very, very productive, and I thought it was very kindly. And the part that I really got a feel for is the kiosk. And I'm really excited about the kiosk as long as they have room for accommodations that they said they was for the people who have disability and all of that. But I think the kiosk is very, very, very important. One reason why I think it is important is because we need to be steward of our money and be efficient in everything that we do. It does help to be efficient, to make sure that the kiosks are working and that there is a staff person to be there if someone would have to fill out a reasonable accommodation to get help. Thank you.
Thank you.
And comments from members of the board? Not, then the President Chair, I think we should move to committee updates.
Steve, before you do that, I'm going to ask the Vice Chair to take over for a minute. I'm going to have to.
Yes, sir.
So, about, and I'll, I'll be back in, okay? Thank you.
Thanks. So now, this member of the board, Vice Chair, we move to committee updates. First one is real estate, turn it over to Ms. Cheryl.
Thank you, it was, it was a good meeting. It was good to learn about some of the things that that department is going over, some of the retrospect communication, and some of the planned processes to put in place so that the general public has an understanding of what the heavy lifting that's involved with this Gilgen project. And I look forward to seeing that manifest, looking forward to seeing all questions answered, and giving the truth, an opportunity to be moved and brought, look at it there.
Ms. Cheryl, do you have anything to add on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nessman, Mr. Nessman, and good evening to board commissioners and my colleagues in the room. Two things that I'll bring up from the narrative report that you saw, just to make mention that there, it has been a delay in the Creighton Court lease up of phase A, but we have a process in place and working with my colleague, Mr. Corey Franklin. We are moving that process along on working with the developer. Also wanted you to know that's for phase A. Phase B is now ahead of schedule and it is at sixty-six percent complete. So, hopefully, we will continue with good weather and be able to complete that project, that phase in early, early twenty-six, and then have Lisa to begin as well there. So, I think all of the lessons we're learning from this first phase A will just carry over to the following phases, so wanted to know that. Thanks to our communications department, the survey and resident ability to vote for naming of the process. We have completed phase one of that process. We'll be meeting with the community on June twenty-sixth at five thirty, and to discuss that and the committee formation of the committee, working with Ms. Olds and the resident leadership there to move that process forward. And not sure if come June or September, when you return from your summer break, we'll have a new name for the new grade. So, excited about those things with Creighton. Won't reiterate anything else in the report unless some of you do have questions. Happy to take those as the Chair, Mr. Nessman, and our committee chair directs.
I had just one up, one update on that, and that is, I know that Chairman Johnson, excuse me, Mr. Nessman, we're going to get keys in hand, we're going to get keys in hand. Lloyd Willen, probably mid-August. Somebody used to say that the river don't dry or whatever, creek don't dry, whatever. He used to say, we will be handing out keys. That's going to be a big, big, big day. We're looking at mid-August based on what we're trying to do with vouchers and everything else. Handing keys to former residents. We're looking again for mid-August. It may slip to, you know, September five, but mid-August, and that's going to be a cherry-eyed day. Former residents are handing keys in hand.
Thank you, it's the final. My next committee. Make some agendas, final.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes. We went over both of the financials as well as the, the audit. For, if you remember, the, the auditor was at last month's meeting. Went through the audit very thorough. So, we had it, we had the opportunity to review that document again. And, you know, again, what, what I think is, is most notable is an audit without any findings, material weaknesses, or deficiencies, as well as any adjusting entries. So, I think that again is, it just goes to the caliber, the commitment of the staff. So, I'll let the, if VP Finance have any additional comments?
The only additional comment I would like to make, so in addition to the audit, we will be submitting that tonight for approval, for acceptance of the audit. The finance department is also in a planning process for a five-twenty-six budget. We have requested a special meeting in August. I think we were very successful last year and it was more efficient just of time to have a special meeting for the presentation of the budget, because it took me an hour to get through and it was very thorough. What we did last year was we recorded the session that we had. And so, but the commissioners that were unable to attend, they got an opportunity to hear the full budget presentation and a full amount of offer A V pack give me. And then in September, we'll come to the full board to present that. So, I think that's the only other thing I wanted to add.
I just want to say, as we close out the committee, I'm precious, you know, with your leadership there, reorganizing finance and the council department. We were in, I first arrived two and a half years ago. We were paying things in properly, it's a general ledger, and some instances, we're not following general GAAP standards. And we're, we're in a good place. But the reason why this is really good, as I said before, is because we will now, next month, have a conversation with S and P rating agency. And now, we can tell them we're in the position now to say, for the term of seven years here, the agency, we think we've got the finance. Can you now give us what's called a non-public, non-public audit rating? So, we can just do what, what we need to do to get what's called a public rating. So, without what, what we get, it's called a soft rating. A soft rating means that it's not public, and they give it to you and say, this is what you need to do to get there. So, all things being good, we've been talking with our audit council. We want to be able to maybe first quarter of next year, see if everything is right, that we can potentially go out with an issue of what's called affordable housing bond, and sell those bonds. It may be what is called perfect place of bonds. We may go and just sell those bonds to Wall Street, but, you know, we not, we would not be in that position, but for your leadership on that, precious that. What are your questions, Lewis?
We're now wanting to use the resolution for the. Want to turn it over to council?
Thanks, Steve. All right, resolution number one. Resolution authorizing Richmond redevelopment and housing authority to donate to the city of Richmond those parcels of unimproved real property, more commonly known as eleven-twelve Idlewood Avenue and three-thirteen South Erickson Street, for recreation space and authorizing the Chief Executive Officer, or his designee to execute and deliver any and all documents required to consummate such transaction. May I have a motion for approval, please? Ready? Motion by Hardeman and seconded by who?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Park. Thank you, sir. All right, I'd like to call a question.
Is that a question?
Yes.
I have a question. I have a question on this. I see it's one-eleven Idlewood Avenue and three-thirteen South Erickson. I'm pretty familiar with the west end and that portion. Is that near the school that's over there? What is, where is that? Who can tell me that?
I want to be sure I have a staff member here who's been handling that project, Ms. Carter Walker. Carter, are you familiar, is that by the school over there?
I am looking it up.
Ms. Walker, you coming?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm not, good evening. I'm looking it up right now on ParcelMapper to make sure that I am correct. It is in the Randolph neighborhood. These are contiguous lots, so they're right next to each other, and they're on the corner of Idlewood and South Erickson Street. I don't, I think it's possible that it's near East School and any part, but I would want to do a little further diligence.
Did they all go by the cemetery? Ms. Parker, it's, it's next to the park, it's near the park. Maybe it's a park. Thank you so much for that. I think this is very good, put it here, but I think at some point, you can't avoid something like this. You know, a class of one, a twin, two, and show us that piece of property in the future. I think that's something that we ought to know, other than looking at a number, one-eleven Idlewood and three-thirteen Erickson. I just think it needs to go up there and show us proximity to everything else, too. So, we can look at that and make that kind of decision.
We will certainly do that, Ms. Parker, for our next anytime we bring a similar matter to you. I do want to share with you and all the community that these transfers are part of an agreement that this board or the VOC for the agency signed previously with the city. It's part of that cooperative agreement. The city funded twenty-one point four million dollars to create the infrastructure. They requested that certain parcels be transferred or returned to them. There are about six or seven of those lots, and three has been approved, you approved three in May, and those transfers have been, I mean, in April, those transfers have been completed. Now, this is an additional two as we work through diligence on the others.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? All right, let's take the vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Brody?
Aye.
Ms. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Hardeman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. McCray? Mr. Parker?
Aye.
All right, the I have a resolution one has been approved.
Thank you.
Going to resolution two. Resolution of Richmond redevelopment and housing authority, accepting, accepting Rabino and Company's independent audit report for fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion for approval? Parker, motion.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Bishop, second. All right, I'd like to open the motion up for questions. Are there any questions?
I just need a refresher, just a brief refresher.
So, what's being asked is for the board of commissioners to accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four audit. As presented last month by all the auditors, this audit did not result in any finding.
Are there any more questions? Let's move to the vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Brody?
Aye.
Ms. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Hardeman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. McCray?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
The I have a resolution two approved. But I believe, Ms. Nessman, we don't close?
That was correct.
All right, well, for basically everyone in the meeting right now, we probably will have to ask you to leave. But I do believe you have a person who you don't stay at.
That is correct. The only folks that need to stay are legal counselors making a presentation and Mr. Denise. And then this, who else?
All right. All right, well, we move that we're going to close meeting to first discuss the content of an RHA to be admitted by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one of Virginia Freedom of Inflation. Number two, to obtain legal advice and discuss the status of the disposition of the various publicly held vacant lots as committed by two point two thirty-seven eleven A three and section two point two. eleven A three and section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight of Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And three, to discuss the disposition of publicly held real property and obtain advice from legal counsel as to the disposition of that real property, commonly known as Gilson Court, as permitted by section two point two thirty-seven eleven A three and point two thirty-seven eleven A eight of Virginia Freedom of Information Act. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Parker, can I get a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Pitchard. This is for approval. All right, we have, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Pitchard?
Aye.
Ms. Brody?
Aye.
Ms. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. McCray? Parker. All right, we're all, I have it, we close the meeting, thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.